You know, we had a quick meeting. It was obviously, obviously quick. The governor had to leave for another commitment, so we agreed to meet again next week on Wednesday morning. And I think in the meantime, we're going to see if we can get members of the, likely members of the conference committee, the bonding conference committee, together to see if they can meet and go through the bill that was on the floor on the last night of session, just to see what members' comfort level is with that bill and if the projects that are in that bill make sense, and talk about both projects in the bill and out of the bill.
Senator?
I agree with him.
All right, so what about veto?
I mean, that's just an update.
Veto of the tax bill. I mean, what do you think?
Well, we didn't really talk about that. We, obviously, we agreed that we'd make whatever fix to the tax bill. It has been talked about, changed the word, but the meeting was brief, and we did talk mostly about giving the legislature and the public an opportunity to have a more extended hearing on the bill that was on the floor. And that's essentially what we agreed to do, is see if we could find a time to make that work.
Well, how do your caucuses feel about where you are today with the bill vetoed and the other big bills not passed?
Well, our caucus is disappointed, obviously. We thought we had agreements, which I think we did have, and whatever the reason, we had a little bit of mess up in the Senate where the majority decided they couldn't pass the bill they'd agreed to. So, our members are disappointed, but we hope that we can get this resolved soon. Frankly, I don't think we can wait too long.
And why not? Can you expound upon that in your state?
Well, we're in an election year, and if you wait too long, it's going to become part of an election contest. I mean, the Senate staff has already left to join their campaign, so, I mean, they're already in campaign mode, so I just think the longer you wait, it gets harder to find agreement, that's all.
Mr. Speaker, did you say next Wednesday or Wednesday?
A week from tomorrow, on Wednesday morning. Next week is when we'll, we'll get together for another discussion about where we're at.
Because you wanted to do this a lot sooner. Senator Hamm was saying he wanted to do it this week.
Well, you know, I think we would like to. We offered to the governor to have a special session on Monday to fix the tax bill. You know, remember, the governor made two demands on the tax bill. We've agreed to both of those. And, you know, I think we could have a special session immediately to deal with that. As far as the other things, I think they, they are going to need a little more vetting, and I think the governor is going to have to move from his position some. I don't know how much he's willing to do that, and maybe over the course of the week, I think it probably is a good time for us to all step back a little bit and not react on having just had the tax bill get vetoed last night.
The governor said 1.1 billion is halfway in between, you know?
Well, halfway in between is actually 1 billion. I'll remind everybody of that. The bill that we had on the last night of session was a compromise bill. It was a bill that had Democrats and Republicans, the majority of all of those voting for the bill. It was, it would have been the largest bonding bill in state history. This was not a small bill. It was not a, you know, something that, that the governor can very easily say or justify that it needs to be raised. It was a bill that, that Republicans supported because of the heavy emphasis and investment in infrastructure around the state, specifically in our road and bridge infrastructure. We think that's really important. Obviously, Democrats also liked the bill for that reason. This would have been a huge bonding bill. As I, you know, how many times can I say, "The largest in state history"? That was a compromise position. So, we're not going to let the governor get away with saying, "We're going to start where we left off." That's, that's, you know, our position was 600, his was 1.4, halfway is 1 billion. We were there on the last night of session. That is compromise. And anything beyond that, he's going to have to do some pretty heavy convincing that we need to move.
And people should go back and look at the last night of session in the Senate. Senator Stumpf, who was the bonding chair, got up and he introduced the bill that we were going to take up in a few minutes, and he described it as a compromise between the House and the Senate, Republicans and Democrats. He started talking about it was a good bill. And then we got into that amendment thing, but nevertheless, our members think this was a negotiated compromise between Republicans and Democrats. And as the speaker pointed out, there's $550 million of the governor's priorities in that bill. So, I, our members think, and that's why I said we should do it this week, we have a bill that's been agreed on. We should take it up and vote on it and pass it. That, to me, is the easiest, cleanest way to do this, but we're going to agree to meet and have a little more discussion and we'll see.
And the governor did say that he wants to have input in the bonding bill, what he, you know, and I brought a sheet of, of all of the governor's priorities that were included. More than half of the bonding bill was the governor's priorities, 545 million, I think, of the, of the 995 million was the governor's priorities. We had the number one priority of every one of the governor's departments, including the number two priority of most of his departments. So, for the governor to say that he didn't have input, you know, and if he wants to start from square one, we'll take all of those projects out and make him argue for the, for the, for those projects to be back in. You can't, you can't get half of the bill and then say you want to start from there as, as some negotiating position. What we, what we are willing to do is we're willing to talk to the governor, and our goal is to do what's right for Minnesotans, for, excuse me, what's right for Minnesotans. And, and so, we're going to hear the governor out. We're going to spend a week thinking and talking a little bit, and we're going to come back next week. But it's, it's really on the governor to convince anybody that, that the bill needs to be increased and that he didn't get his priorities represented when that's clearly not the case. More than half of the bill is the governor's priorities.
So, what will happen between now and next week? What will happen to change?
Well, potentially, we're going to get together the, the bonding conference committee members to actually have public hearings on what was in the bill on the last night of session, to vet those even more thoroughly than they have been vetted in both of the bonding committees already, and, and talk about those projects. And I assume there will be discussion about the governor's additional priorities or demands that he wants included in the bill, and whether or not those should be included. I don't think that that committee will be making any final decisions until we can give them a target number. And remember, it was the, the lack of a target for bonding and, and the lack of the Democrats' ability to agree to a target until 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock on the last night of session that really circumvented a, a very transparent process in the legislature. We would have much rather preferred a transparent process, but even to meet halfway, the Democrats, for them to come off of their number took until 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock on the last night of session.
What should people be thinking outside this Capitol? It looks like dysfunction, chaos, confusion, and then no sense of urgency today.
Well, I think that they should be thinking that it's, it's better that we take our time and do what's right, rather than rush into something again. And frankly, the legislature, both Republicans and Democrats, are very happy with the bills that were passed on the last night of session. You see that with the broad bipartisan support that those bills had. And frankly, I think Minnesotans, when they've, you know, talked to us about what was in those bills, the projects, Highway 23, Highway 14, Highway 12, the most dangerous stretch of highway in the state, I think folks in Minnesota are really happy that these are the kinds of things that, that we're planning to invest in, and they want to see these bills passed. I think folks are disappointed. My email's been lighting up since last night, since the governor vetoed the tax bill. I think folks are disappointed that the governor vetoed the tax bill. I'm disappointed. You know, I think he's using the, the error that was in the bill as an excuse to veto it. I think that's pretty obvious. Probably, you know, quite a few bills that we pass have an error here or there, and it's a drafting error, inadvertent word or something. We have a process for fixing those. It's very easy. I will remind folks that it was actually not House language, or even a House directive to change that language or definition. It was the Revenue Department that asked for that definition to change, and that happened a year ago. Those discussions between Revenue and our nonpartisan staff that drafted the bill happened a year ago, and they've been in process. It was the Revenue Department, the governor's own Revenue Department, that asked for the change in definition that, that eventually, and they didn't agree to the, to the error, but the error happened as a result of a change that the governor's department requested. So, you know, I think the governor likes to blame the legislature for what happened in that bill, but it was not House language or Senate language. It was actually the governor's department that requested that change in the bill and, and that led to the drafting error.
Will the disagreement over transit prevent this from being resolved?
What's that?
Will the disagreement over transit prevent the special session?
I don't think so. It's, it's going to be very difficult for us to take action on Southwest Light Rail when there's two pending lawsuits, and, and there's so much unknown about the process that led us up to this point. I know the courts have ordered that a lot of the documentation now be released on the background on Southwest Light Rail, so I think people need to have more time to kind of dig into that project. My email's also getting overwhelmed by people against Southwest Light Rail, and it's people I can tell that don't typically vote Republican, so this isn't a partisan issue. It's, it's a geographic issue, and folks in Minneapolis and out to Eden Prairie really are not supportive, generally, I think, of the project. And so, I don't see it holding things up at this point.
You say you hope that the governor's going to move up his position over the next few weeks or so. Are you willing to move up your positions?
Which is what?
I mean, you, you stood by your position that you think the bills you passed are good? The governor wants more?
Well, the bills that we passed are compromise bills. You know, they're, the number that we're at right now on bonding is literally halfway between where we were and halfway between where the governor was. You know, that is compromise. Trying to redefine compromise as something else. You know, we've seen the governor try to redefine some things in the past week. First, he said he wasn't going to hold the tax bill hostage. Then he held it hostage. You know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, the folks of Minnesota elected this governor, and they elected me to work with him, and I think Minnesotans appreciate the fact that we've been a check and balance on the, on the governor's continued taxing and spending. We will continue to represent that. But ultimately, I think what we need to do, and what I'm going to challenge the governor to do, is do what's right for Minnesotans. And I think what we need to do is pass the, the tax bill and the, and the bonding bill that we had on the last night of session. If he feels that there's some other things that must be included, we are willing to talk to him about that. And I think that's, that's what compromise is. And, you know, but compromise isn't, you know, "You must agree to everything I'm demanding, or I won't do it." That's not compromise. And compromise isn't, isn't redefining and saying that, "Well, the new compromise is I'm halfway between where you came to and where I started." That's also not compromise. So, I think everybody needs to, you know, kind of think about that over the next week, and hopefully, we'll have a good meeting next week. And I think we will.
You say Southwest Light Rail will not hold this up, but the governor insists on that. You are adamantly opposed to it. It seems to me that's a major stumbling block.
Well, I think, I don't know that the governor's, and it didn't come up in this meeting. I don't know that the governor's necessarily insisting on that. Minnesotans are not insisting. I think we can see that pretty clearly, that it be included. I think there are some people that want it, no question, but I think the vast majority of Minnesotans are concerned about the cost and really whether it's the most effective or efficient use of, of our transportation dollars. So, there are big concerns about it. And the fact that, you know, I know people say that they don't want to lose the federal money, but taking the federal money to encumber us into eternity in covering the ongoing operating costs of a rail that will never have a chance of breaking even doesn't make a lot of sense, and I think people understand that.
Well, are you, will you, are you willing to go along with giving the Met Council more flexibility, like what the governor's talking about, as opposed to out and out state funding, allowing them to spend their own money on it, or is that problematic as far as both of your thoughts?
Well, you know, we didn't talk about it in this meeting, but maybe what needs to happen, frankly, is, is for us to have an open hearing on Southwest Light Rail and the different options that are on the table. Because folks, you know, really, as I've said, we're getting a lot of feedback that folks do not support Southwest Light Rail. And, and, you know, there are problems with it. There's two pending lawsuits. The, the line that they've, or the path that they have plotted out is highly controversial and is in dispute. I think there's some environmental impacts that folks are concerned about. So, I think there's a lot more vetting that needs to happen on that line before we can.
Bill, on that, on that point?
Hold on, I want to hear Senator Hamm.
On that point, Bill, there was never any, there was never any bill in the Senate, and I doubt in the House, on this amendment that came up the last day of session. That is never seen before anywhere.
Right, never been vetted.
In fact, there were no hearings and votes taken in any Senate committee or on the floor of the Senate that had anything to do with this project. So, to have such a high priority on something that there's no bill for, no hearings, no committee action, and then make up something at the last minute and offer it literally moments before we adjourn and say, "That's our top priority," that, to me, sounds like a political stunt. Doesn't sound like a serious attempt to get something done.
Senator, you're, you're opposed to Southwest Light Rail?
I am not opposed. I'm willing to have a discussion about it, and what I think has happened is there has not been any attempt to build support for this project across the state. We're during the legislature, we're asking 201 legislators around the state to support something that there's never been a hearing about. I think that's a problem. I don't, I don't believe there's been enough effort to get the public to understand what the costs are, what the trade-offs are, and to get some support for it. So, I think to try to jam something through without that taking place is not how we should do this.
Could there be one in the next week, a hearing about Southwest Light Rail along with bonding?
There's no bill.
Informational hearing.
Well, it did happen, informational hearing in the Senate. They had an informational hearing in the Senate.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, you guys are going back into your separate corners, I guess, for lack of a better term, for about a week. How much is the trust factor? You know, you said the governor broke his word or didn't keep his word. I mean, are you still kind of leery or?
Well, you know, my natural default position is to want to trust people, but unfortunately, the governor has, has done and said some things that he has gone back on in the last week. And obviously, that's concerning, but I like the governor. I, you know, I may not agree with him on all of these issues, but, but we've had a good relationship, so I'm, you know, my default position is I'm going to work with him, and I'm going to try to trust him. But I think we have to work at that. And I think the governor's going to have to, you know, commit to real compromise and understand that the positions that we had on the last night of session, and this isn't a partisan thing. The governor needs to respect the legislative process, and you can't not participate in it, then veto the bills and expect to relive the entire legislative, you know, legislative session. It just, that, that's, that doesn't respect the legislators on either side of the aisle and the work that we've done to get us this far. And there was incredible amount of compromise and, and work that went into the bills that we had at the end of session. The tax bill passed the House with 123 votes. It was, it was literally the most bipartisan bill, tax bill, that has, I think, ever been vetoed in the state of Minnesota. And, and the governor doesn't seem to care about that. And there was a lot of people that will be hurt by that bill going down, and it puts things in question, like the, the soccer stadium, the siding plant up on the range, the, you know, tax relief for, for families, for parents, for college students, for veterans, for farmers. I mean, it just, it, it really wasn't a good move on the governor's part to veto that bill when we had many other ways to fix the, the error that was in the bill. So, I think we're, we're all, you know, a little concerned that the governor maybe didn't like the bill, and that's why he took it down, or didn't want to provide tax relief to Minnesotans. We hope that's not the case. I hope that we can resurrect that bill, but at this point, the further we get from where we were on the last night of session, I think the more difficult it makes it to get to a final agreement.
Do you two expect a special session?
You know, I don't know. And, and, you know, for me, I'm going to, I'm going to make the commitment that I'm going to continue to work for what's best for Minnesota, and I believe that the bills that we had on the last night of session were what was best for Minnesota. They were incredible amount of work that went into those bills, incredible compromise. We have, we have been, you know, very reasonable in compromising to get to this point. And it is a little difficult to, to, you know, get letters from the governor that say, you know, "You need to meet every one of my demands, or I'm not doing this." To me, that's not a, not, not negotiating in good faith, and it's difficult for us to negotiate with somebody that changes their mind or changes their position. So, I think it's good that we probably take a week and, and come back next week and, and see if things are in a little better situation.
The bonding committee, members of the bonding committee?
I think that's the direction we'll go, yeah. I haven't talked to them yet.
How do you describe the tone of the meeting? Was it strange, civil?
No, we had a, you know, we have a very good relationship, and, you know, I'm also somebody that just doesn't get mad and doesn't get angry, and I think in the three and a half years that I've been leader of my caucus, people have seen that. There are some things that are just beyond my control, and, and I don't get angry about them. And I don't think that serves Minnesotans well. So, we had a very good meeting and a very cordial meeting, and we'll continue to, to meet as long as we think there's progress that can be made to get to a result that's good for Minnesotans, and that's our ultimate goal. We want to do what's right by Minnesotans. We really want to spend $700 million on roads and bridges. We think our roads need it. You know, we, we really want to do those things. So, our commitment is to continue to work with them until we feel like it's not productive anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
We had a cordial conversation with the speaker and the minority leader in the Senate. I know that they said that they felt like they needed to come to kind of have a cooling off period. I don't think that any of the three of us feel particularly hot about anything, but we're glad that there's going to be a, an open and public process to talk about the bonding proposals next week, to be scheduled by the bonding member conferees and the governor. And I just reiterated our desire to, you know, get something done for both, both bonding and the tax bill. Now, let the majority leader and...
Well, I too am pleased that the bonding committee's going to get back together, and I'm going to encourage my other caucus members to attend that meeting so that they can, ultimately, they're going to have to vote on a bill if there's a special session so that they get a chance to get a good thorough review of what was in the bill that last night. I have asked the governor's office to bring forward his bonding proposals in addition to what's in the bill. On the last night, I asked, for instance, I asked the speaker if he would put in the University of Minnesota Medical Building, because I knew it was a high priority for the governor, and he told me he just couldn't fit it in. So, I think maybe the governor bringing forth the proposals that are important to him and potentially having some public testimony on them, why they'd be good for Minnesota, I think would be beneficial to the entire conference committee. It took me weeks to get the speaker to agree to appoint a conference committee on bonding. We always knew it wasn't going to be the bonding vehicle, but it would have been an opportunity to get the public input and to give the administration an opportunity to weigh in in the bonding process. Finally, in the last week or so, he did finally agree to put a conference committee together, but it really didn't do the kind of work that we expect conference committees to do. So, I'm hopeful that when we get this kind of impromptu group, because we've adjourned Sineady Eye, so it'd probably be a little fair to call them a conference committee, but when we get them together, that we can have a good public process and review what was in the bill, what the governor's priorities are, because I really feel like they were not considered in assembling the bill. The House had put the bill together the last day. They had come over to the Senate late that night and did give us an opportunity to make a couple of changes to accommodate some of the Senate's needs, but I actually don't feel like the governor was ever consulted in the contents of the bill. So, I do think this process will give the administration an opportunity to get some things out on the table that they think are important to be incorporated into a bonding committee. Pleased that the speaker absolutely wanted to meet again next week as, as leaders with the administration. We don't know yet, what day the bonding group will meet. We'll have to see what the availabilities of the chairs and the conference committee members are, but I certainly hope that would be before the leaders get together next Wednesday.
Ah, well, as you can imagine, I too am glad that we are going to get the bonding committee together. It was ridiculous that we had no type of process whatsoever, especially on the House side with the bonding bill. I understand the speaker is still claiming that his fantasy $600 million bonding bill is a starting point. As you know, that bill has never existed. There's never been a spreadsheet. It exists only in the speaker's imagination. So, if we're actually going to seriously compromise, we at least either need to start with the $800 million bonding bill that was passed off the, the House, or failed to pass off the House floor, or perhaps he could put his, his fantasy bill and give it to all of you so we have it in public. But this public process is really, really important, and not just to hear what was in the bill that passed off the House floor at the end, and not just to hear the governor's proposals, but we also have members that have projects that they're very interested in. And I think giving them a chance to represent their constituents and be part of that discussion, I think, is going to be very important. I think it's also going to be a very good opportunity to demonstrate that this idea of earmarking quarters of commerce, earmarking projects that aren't even ready to go in that bill as was left, as it left the floor, is terrible precedent, terrible policy, and something that we shouldn't do. The most frustrating thing to me about this whole thing is there's just absolutely no reason we should be standing here today. We should have gotten our work done two weeks ago. Frankly, had we been in charge, it would have been done two weeks ago. And what's even more frustrating is that the Republicans and the speaker have taken absolutely no responsibility whatsoever for the failure of this session. That's not leadership at all. You know, if, if you're going to get to a point where a session falls apart like this session does, you got to step up and say, you know, "We got to fix it and do something different." I understand that the speaker is now blaming the administration for the error in the tax bill. That was a provision that came from Representative Jim Knoblock. I mean, that, those are the facts. So, for the speaker to try to, now, now, like, once again, kind of deflect responsibility for any failure whatsoever, I think is just a fundamental reflection of what's wrong with this place and why we need to change. And with that, I'll happy to answer questions.
I'd like to ask the leaders, what do you think the chances are of this actually happening, given, given that maybe there's no deadline, except maybe the Fourth of July parades and, you know?
Well, I made it clear to the speaker on the last night that there, a bonding bill can't pass the Senate without a provision in it that allows us to access the federal money for Southwest Light Rail. Just can't do that. I gave him the language. I was disappointed it wasn't in the bill. The Senate put it in the bill. It's a requirement in the Senate. That is going to have to be in the bill. Doesn't cost any state money. It does put some burden on, on property taxpayers, but that's not new. There's plenty of precedent for that. Prior to the 2001 tax reform, we were levying about $130 million a year for transit. So, it's not new. There aren't enough people around to remember that, the Governor Ventura's big plan, of which we took pieces of in 2001. But I think it's doable. I think the speaker is going to have to be willing to meet. If he's not willing to meet the governor halfway, then I invite him to meet the Senate halfway. The Senate bonding bill that we put on the floor of the Senate on May 2nd, plenty of time to have gotten that bill to conference committee that didn't fail, that ended up not passing, May 2nd, was about $1.5 billion. The bill that the House finally reluctantly put on the floor of $800 million that also failed, the midway point on that, if my math in my head is correct, is about $1.15 billion. I'm absolutely willing to meet the speaker halfway. The governor's got a different way to look at the math. His proposal and the bill that passed on the last night, which comes to about 1.1. So, I think no matter how you do the math, the number of 1.1 or 1.15 billion dollars is the midpoint, and I think people are going to be, have to be willing to pick the midpoint. But you don't get to pick a fantasy number of 600 million that no one's ever seen the bill. The bill never was on the floor. It is purely a fictitious number to start from. It seems like we got to start from real numbers, with either House and Senate bills that failed, or governor's proposal and the House's proposal on the last night. And I think if people are willing to do that, I, I think this is relatively easy to bring to a conclusion.
Senator, Speaker, I doubt you're just out here saying that he didn't think Southwest Light Rail was an issue. He thinks the governor didn't bring it up today, and that that's no longer an issue. Was the impression he gave?
I think it's presumed that it's in the bill. Doesn't cost anything to the, to the state, at least not the way the Senate proposed it. I think the presumption is, is that it's in the bill. And if it's not in the bonding bill, maybe it's in the tax bill. But it's going to, I think the presumption is going to be in something.
Thank you, Senator. I mean, I just want to say, that's just ridiculous. I think the speaker knows full well that that is an important priority of this administration.
So, what are the chance of a special session?
That may sound, that may just sound a little less, I suppose. Um, what, you know, I, we're, I think there, I still think that there's a good chance that we're going to get to a special session. And I think it's just a matter of people coming together. Maybe there is a time that we need a cooling off period. But the fact of the matter is, the proposals that the governor's, I mean, the tax bill is easy. We, that's, that, that we can fix. And the proposals that the governor is putting on the table, I mean, setting aside kind of where the middle of these numbers are, what he's talking about is making sure that we make St. Peter safe. And this is public safety. It's making sure we invest in the most important economic engine in our state, probably, the University of Minnesota. And it's making sure that we're making, you know, other investments along those lines. These are entirely reasonable projects that all Minnesotans support. And why we are not willing to make those investments at a time when we again have low interest rates and we have the capacity to do it, kind of boggles my mind. So, I think once members kind of sit back and reflect on that, I think we're going to get to a place where we can pass a bonding bill that reflects all members, all parts of the state's needs, and does the right thing by, by Minnesotans, and then, and also on the spending provisions that the governor is putting forward. Again, fundamental public safety things, you know, St. Peter, and making sure we're investing in our higher education institutions. Those are things that all Minnesotans support. And so, you know, from that, and even beyond that, there are things that the governor had on his list before we went, before the session ended. So, I think that there, you know, once reasonable Minnesotans kind of hear what's going on, I think legislators are going to come back, represent their constituents well, and we'll get these bills done.
Senator Bach, are you?
The other two of you on that one, do you two agree with that?
I mean, I think it's totally feasible and completely realistic to have a special session where we get a tax bill done, we get a good bonding bill, and we address some of the priorities that the governor has laid out really clearly. And I think what will happen is that the speaker and his members will be back in their districts, and they will hear from people about how much they want these things. And I think that'll be good, positive pressure for making progress.
Senator Bach, what is the mood of your caucus members? Are they concerned about the prospect of campaigning without a bonding bill or a tax bill to talk about?
Well, I had a phone conference call with all of the caucus members Friday, Friday, last Friday, and after the, the meeting with the governor and leadership, and it was very positive. I mean, they felt really good about the, the work that was done. I, I, it doesn't seem that difficult to me. I, I don't understand why the speaker wants to make it so difficult. I mean, if you look, he keeps talking about bonding bills larger than ever done in, in history. I think if you, if you price out previous bonding bills in inflation-adjusted dollars or, or constant dollars, you'll find that this bill is pretty modest. There's a number of different ways to look at it. You could look at it as, well, the state's population is growing. What's our debt service per capita now compared to what it was 10, 20 years from now? There's a number of different ways to look at it, but to just pick an arbitrary number like a billion dollars and say, "Well, we can't ever go beyond that." I've actually suggested to the speaker that we ought to do some work on, in constant dollars, how does this bonding bill compare to bonding bills? dollars, how does this bonding bill compare to bonding bills of the past? And we've asked for some of that work to be done, because I do think going down the road, two years from now, we're looking at another bonding bill, and four years from now, we're looking at another bonding bill. If people continue to raise this billion dollar number as some kind of a total arbitrary cap, I, I think some work should be done to show that that really has no merit.
But are they worried about the campaign, if this doesn't help them?